All right, good evening. It is still May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. The time is five oh seven P M. And this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Argyle I S D Board of Trustees. At this time we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDay present.
Josh Westrom present.
Rich McDowell present.
Lee and Arco present.
Matt Slaton present.
Karen Hawksworth present.
I Sam Slaton present. We do have a quorum established. The time remains five oh seven P M. And we will adjourn to executive session.
All right, good evening. It's 6:27 PM. We have returned from executive session. This time, it looks like we have some special guests here. Ms. Tollis, who would you like to introduce?
Yes, good evening, everyone. We have got the student council from Jane Rusman Elementary here to say a few words and do the pledges.
Awesome. I can't see, Craig.
Hi, my name is Olivia, and I'm a fifth grade student at JRE. One thing I love about JRE is how all the teachers and staff are kind and caring. One thing I've learned as a member of student council this year was to learn to be responsible and be a leader.
Very nice to meet you.
Hi, my name is Kaylee, and one thing I love about JRE is that the school is new, so the cafeteria doesn't smell bad, and the teachers and staff, and how kind they are to students. One thing I've learned is how to be more responsible.
Hi, I'm Chloe, and I'm a fifth grade student at JRE, and one thing I love about JRE is all of the staffs and the colors. And one thing I've learned as a student council member is to keep my grades up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Siddiksha, and I'm a fifth grade student at JRE. One thing I love about JRE is how kind and amazing our teachers are. This year, what I learned in student council was how to be a leader and take responsibility. Thank you.
My name is Cadence, and one thing I love about JRE is everyone is so welcoming and kind. And what I've learned in student council is how to become more of a leader.
Hi, my name is Liam, and one thing I love about JRE is how nice and caring my teachers are to me and my friends. One thing I've learned as a member of student council is how to help the community and be a leader.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
One thing I love about JRE, I'm a Shaw's, I'm a fifth grade student here at JRE. One thing I love about JRE is all the amazing programs like Safety Patrol, Student Council, News Reading, Choir, etc. And I was part of these, those programs. And one thing I've learned as a student council member, I've learned how to brainstorm and plan events, become more responsible, and gain confidence to overcome the stage fear like here, and become a better person.
Excellent.
All right.
That would be awesome.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank y'all so much. You are welcome. We like to throw we, if we like to throw something hard to get, bricks to the ground.
What you got? Oh, thank you so much. Hang on.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Tollis. Thank you, Ms. Ford.
All right. Awesome pledges by our JRE student council. Okay, at this time, we'll have our opening prayer. Dear Father God, we thank you for so many celebrations that we got to have yesterday with our seniors graduating. Lord, we pray that you just watch over them, guide them, and be ever-present in their hearts and their minds. Lord, we pray for our students in this district and our faculty as we close out this amazing school year. We pray that all the families have a safe and restful summer. Lord, again, we thank you for the opportunity to serve this district. I pray that it be on our hearts continually that we just focus on our intent to do your will in this district, Lord, and to serve this community, the students, and faculty well. Lord, we thank you, and send your sunshine every prayer. Amen. All right, we did not have anyone sign up for public comment. We do not have any action to take from closed session, so now we will install some old faces to their new term as trustees. I believe in place six, we have Mr. Matthew Slaton going first.
Yes.
I can see the family showed up.
They barely showed up at first.
All right, this will be after me.
I'm Matthew Slaton.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Arga ISB for the trustees placed this.
For Arga ISB for the trustees placed this.
As the Texas.
For the state Texas.
And will to, and will to the best my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Constitution laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long, Carl.
So long, dear.
Almost like you never left.
Good job.
It's not bad.
I'll clap for you. Mr. Western.
You want to rethink this? One last chance.
This is your last chance, Josh.
Where's Garrett?
He's working on his phone bill.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Arga ISB for the trustees placed this. Of Argyle I S D for trustees, place seven? Of Argyle I S D for trustees, place seven? Of the United States of America? The United States of America? And I will to the best of my abilities preserve, protect, and defend? I will to the best of my abilities preserve, protect, and defend? The Constitution and the laws of the United States? The Constitution and the laws of the United States? And of this state? And of this state? So help me God. So help me God.
Do we need a group photo?
Group photo? Group photo?
All right, at this time, we have organization of the board, so I will entertain a motion slash nomination for the president of the board.
I nominate Sam Slaton as president.
Mr. Hawxworth with a nomination for Sam Slaton as president. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McDade, a second. Not even going to ask. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, is that official?
It's official.
Okay, six, one.
He's Josh.
That's terrible. Awesome. All right, I will now entertain a nomination or motion for vice president of the board.
I nominate Craig Hawxworth.
Mrs. Artho nomination for Mr. Hawxworth for vice president. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Man, that hurts. All right, seven, zero.
I figured he was going to everybody.
I thought he was going everyone. He just needs fodder.
That's even worse.
He just needs fodder right here. All right, and now I'll entertain a nomination for secretary of the board.
Nominate Matthew Slaton.
Mr. Westrom with a nomination for Matthew Slaton as board secretary. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDowell with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Man, I can't wait to hear about this. It's going to be a year long worth of fodder.
I told you.
Yep, I told everyone. All right, good deal. All right, consent agenda. Does not look like we have any donations, do we?
Yeah.
Missed them. Oh, they're there. They're there. All right, April twenty-twenty-five donations. J R E P T A, two hundred and fifty dollars for Garden Club, Denton Farmers Bureau, two hundred and fifty dollars for Garden Club. J R E P T A, fifteen hundred dollars for Patrol Stories guest speaker. Hilltop Elementary School P T A, two hundred and twenty dollars for Kinder Field Trip. Town of Argyle Police Department, fifteen hundred dollars for Red Ribbon Week. That's three hundred and seventy-five dollars to each elementary campus. And A A B C Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-five donation number seventeen, two thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-three cents for baseball field lettering. Total April donation, six thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-three cents. Awesome. So you want to have any questions on any of the consent items? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Dr. McDade, motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Westrom with second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, we've got our spring demographers report.
No, is Hudson in here yet?
He's next door.
Yeah, he's, okay, so we'll move on to construction.
Okay.
Mr. Hufflebe here in a little while.
Mr. Cohen.
So I've got Pogue here tonight for their quarterly delivery of the reports, but before they get started, just wanted to clarify. I know we talked some elementary school five at the workshop earlier today. The architectural fees are the same on four and five. Those were bond budgets we were looking at on that report. So I did go back and look at their contracts and they are the same cost.
So is it just that line item that we used in the bond budget?
From the bond budget. That's what we had.
No other line item? All the rest were right?
No, everything was bond budget, trying to keep comparison across the board. But I didn't want to have actual dollars on one and budgets on the other.
Do we know what the actual fee is compared to what was given to us? Who, one's a budget number?
No, the one he gave us was budget.
It's a bond budget because I don't have dollars for all those categories, so if I start putting in actual contract dollars on some line items, but not on the other, it would skew it. So I went bond budgets.
Okay.
The architectural contract was a million three oh eight on both.
Thank you.
And if there are any other questions, we can address those now, or if not, then I've got Pogue here to deliver some reports.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Long time no see.
It has been, hasn't it? I'll start right here with the stadium. This is a really good picture that you guys could probably see if we stepped out in the parking lot, but that shows that all of our, all of our peers are in for our grandstand. And we are working our way up that, to the mezzanine level there in our, in our grandstand. Got our shaft for our elevator in. They're moving. And then in the background there, you can kind of see that practice field's already been sodded and we've got, we've got grass being established in the, out there by the, by the street as well. There's a close-up with one of the concession stands. It's being completed. There's a picture of I A C foundations. Moving right along there as well. There's another concession building. That yellow square there is another concession building that'll be built.
The visitor stands are already, we see those this week, yeah?
Yes, ma'am. They've, they've started the installation of those, and as soon as they're done there, they'll move to the home side.
Anything that, with the kids being out of school, that's going to allow you to work longer, faster, hard, whatever, people?
We're trying.
Okay.
One thing is, is that inside our jurisdictions, we have some very limited work hours, so we're, we're toeing the line with those now and soon.
Flower man, like Flower Man ordinances?
Yes, sir.
That makes sense.
So I think we're, we're moving as such, and then we'll, we'll see what the outcome is.
Is it ever a possibility to get a variance on that during the summer, when we don't have school and work hours?
I think the noise variance is more related to the houses and the, and the close proximity of those homes. I think we can ask. I, I don't know that they'll say yes or no, but they've been really strict in regards to some things that we have asked for to this point. I hate saying that right now, but we're kind of moving forward as such and I'll ask for forgiveness.
Or you're on schedule?
Uh, we're.
With the weather and all that?
We're not on schedule, no, sir. We, we, we have encountered some delays with, with, with rain. Those have, those have been, those have been set to, to the district currently. I think one of the other challenges that is, is so not understood in this setting is so much of this work is done off of a lift. And if you guys can imagine being in a boom lift, a hundred and twenty foot in the air, like what our winds were today. You just don't get a lot done. And so it's really hard to quantify what you're going to get done in a week's time when you get outside and you can barely stand up. I mean, I had a hard time keeping my truck door shut this morning, you know, open. And you're a hundred and twenty foot in the air and a boom lift's moving six or eight feet at times, so it's been very hard to quantify. We are accelerating in every way that we possibly can and trying to pick up as much steam as we can. But yes, we have, we have encountered some, some weather delays to this point.
To some degree, you have a certain amount of days built in.
We do.
Correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and, you know, once again, the uniqueness to this type of project is you're never in the dry. You know, and, and one other thing that makes it really difficult to accelerate in a situation like this is, you know, in a middle school or an elementary school or something like that, I've got so much square footage that I can spread guys out. I could throw an army at it. The challenging thing that we have here is eighty-five percent of the work is in a six thousand square foot space, a hundred and twenty foot elevated in the air, and there's only so many men that you can put in that space and do it in a safe manner. So we're, we're looking into every avenue that we can to, to accelerate, but we're also very cautious of the fact that we need to do it in a very safe way as well. We're trying.
And probably we're tested that. Yeah.
Right, here's a picture on, on the visitor's side there. Well, like Courtney had spoke to, we, we've already started installing our grandstands there, so this picture is a couple of days old. It's just another angle of our, of our home side. You can see our parking lots and everything are in, and both concession stands on the home side are, are moving well, so we should be okay. It's more established grass in our, in our parking lots. That's what was our laydown area there. We've got a temporary irrigation in there and we've hydromulched those areas already. One trick to us being able to get our inspections when we get done is, once again, another city ordinance is we have to have eighty percent of our ground covering established before they'll entertain a inspection. So we're making steps to get as much of that done as possible, as early as possible, so this is established when the time comes for us to go and ask for that inspection. We hope to move that trailer out in the next sixty days or so and get that area over there completely wrapped up and done. Move our fences in more, more toward the parking lot over there. So as our, as we look ahead, we're going to continue pouring our fire lanes, continue erecting our steel and our press box. Once we get that done, then, then, you know, our structure's built and we can look at accelerating even more. Continue masonry on the concession stands and begin our visitor's side grandstand installation, so we are, we are trying to take advantage of every hour we got currently. We've got crews starting at six in the morning and when the weather allows, they are working until we run out of daylight. Here is the milestones that we have. Town permit we got on September fifth, twenty twenty-four. Field event locations were turned over January first of twenty twenty-five. Press box erection started in March of twenty-five. I A C starts spring of twenty twenty-five. That is in the coming weeks. It's starting to be delivered now. Visitor grandstand started this week. Home grandstand, we're hoping to start that in the last, the end of June. Start, start getting it installed the end of June. Substantial completion contractually is November twenty-third. That date does not encompass the twenty-nine days of weather that we've encountered to this point. We put them on here as a discussion topic, just to speak to where we're at currently. Any questions for the stadium before we move into middle school?
Do we know how many football games or will have home games after November twenty-third?
Our senior game is October thirty-first.
The, that's, November twenty-third's already two weeks, three weeks into playoffs.
Yeah, so, I mean, to me.
Senior night's October thirty-first.
The season, I mean, there's not going to be likely any games played next year in that stadium. And therefore, take the time you need to do a good, safe job.
Yes, sir. That'd be my suggestion.
Yeah, that's two weeks after the first round of playoffs.
Right.
Yeah.
As is.
Middle school update. Look at that pretty football field. I think it's already installed, ready to go. Like we discussed, we've got.
Don't tell the youth organizations.
Oh, they've already asked.
Haven't they?
Get a call.
Are they really? Construction site.
It is a construction site.
You see, the field's ready.
Yeah, but it's not ready.
It's a green space. It's a green space.
It's not ready.
Keep the gates locked.
They're, they're searching for every spot because they've got, they've got, you know, so many students that want to play and participate. They need every green space that we can give them.
There's our moisture conditioning for our tennis courts. I'll slow-play those so you don't get that phone call next week. We continue to pour slabs. All of our slabs will be poured by the end of the month. And as you can see over there, our storm shelter and a lot of our C M U is already up and moving. Over there in the, in those areas, we expect to be getting those dried in early next month as well.
Liz and I had the opportunity to tour, was that Thursday of last week?
Yes.
When we were out there, and so they had just poured literally that morning, and they did compliment the fact that Town of Argyle is allowed three A M pours. And so they had just poured that section that you can, you can tell they're prepping right there. They had poured that. And so it's all concrete now, and then the band halls on the backside, so we got to see that.
Well, we, I, I would speak to the fact that we do have a couple of neighbors right there that has been somewhat accommodated to, to our needs.
That was, that was the other compliment is that, yeah.
They've been very accommodating to this point. Let's see, there's, there's our, our storm shelter and our, and our gems locker room.
Your outdoor Ed pond?
There it is.
We talked about it.
Stock it. We're just doing some steel work there and then we're, we'll be pouring that, that floor as well. And then, as you can see over there in the upper part of that, we've got all of our undergrounds and in that area, hoping to get that slab poured here in the next couple of weeks. Every time we get some traction out there, we just get a couple inches of rain and that site does, uh, that soles, it holds on to it, so. All of our paving is down currently, so, you know, the, the site over there. Let's see if I can find a better picture. Up there to the north of the, the site north where those cars are parked, that'd be elementary school. All slabs are poured. Waterproofing frame and N A P will begin. Steel erection will continue. Finish the field events and the tennis courts. We'll start our brick and air and we'll begin irrigation and landscaping. Once again, what we're trying to do there is get our irrigation and, and sod established early on in the areas that we will no longer be working in, just to control that way there's no extra cost in regards to regrading things or anything of that nature at a later date. Here's our, our milestones for the middle school. Town of Argyle permit was received December twentieth. Dry and buildings and set R T Us will be September of twenty twenty-five. We'll get our elevator installed in the spring of twenty-six, and our substantial completion is July of twenty twenty-six, which I believe is in alignment with Jeff's plans to install furniture. That's all I have. You guys have any questions for middle school?
So the permit that you got in December, was that all-encompassing on the plans you submitted?
That, that was the building permit and that goes back to what we talked about in the workshop, is that they excluded those other areas.
At that time?
Yes, at that time. So that, that was a building permit. We actually got a grading permit back around the end of August, I believe.
Right.
But this would have been our building permit date.
And was there a reason given why they were pulled?
No, no reason was given.
And again, in your industry, you've never seen the permitting requirements that we're having to go through. And again, in your industry, you've never seen the permitting requirements that we're having to go through right now with the town of Argyle.
No, sir, in my history, I've worked up and down the coast of California, Miami-Dade County. And some of the things that we encounter here are just not of the norm. I've been all over the country and they're just not up to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hudson, since you just showed up, we've actually pushed you to the very end. So, but. All right, go ahead and come on up. Yeah, you're good.
How are you?
Doing great. How are y'all?
We're good.
You're good.
All right, well, thank you all very much. I, I, I certainly appreciate it, Dr. Carpenter. Thanks for allowing me to multitask a little bit this evening. So, uh, happy to be here with you physically and not having to do any Zoom presentations or anything crazy. So, uh, with that said, uh, again, thank you for the opportunity to be with you here tonight and I'll, uh, get things kind of cranked up, uh, with the, with the, uh, spring report.
All right, here we go.
All right. We got it. If I got control, all right. So, you know, we are kind of looking at what's happening, uh, with, with the economic picture right now and what that potentially may mean related to evaluating what's happening with the housing act, uh, industry. Overall, we've seen a slight uptick, uh, in unemployment when you look at some of the numbers at the local level as well as the state level. Um, we are also continuing to monitor, monitor trade and tariffs. As we know, that's been, uh, that can create some challenges and some, so impact industry. So, uh, my, it, we've seen quite a, quite a few changes in the last probably six to seven weeks from where we thought things were in early April to even where they're at today have shifted a little bit related to the overall market conditions. Uh, so we'll continue to kind of evaluate that. We'd see that businesses are also kind of evaluating things related to tariffs and trade and what that potentially is going to mean for their outlooks. Uh, so again, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to monitor that and see what kind of impacts there will be in the next several months and what that potentially could mean for the housing, uh, housing industry. Overall, when we think about things at the local level, uh, we continue to see very positive, uh, developments that are taking place in the overall area. Again, with the heritage development, uh, we know that there's a, a master plan development within the area that, uh, we know is going to bring in significant tax revenue as well as additional jobs. Uh, so with, with what's being referenced currently right now, that could potentially be as many as thirty-two hundred jobs that could be coming into the region. Again, very, uh, solid jobs when you think about potentially what's happening, uh, with, uh, Baylor Scott and White and with a potential medical campus there in the region. Uh, so again, several phases of that will, will kick in in the next, uh, next few years. But again, this just points to more positive development, uh, that's going to be taking place. Uh, maybe a little bit of additional traffic, uh, but hopefully there'll be some infrastructure and some things that take place in, in the next, uh, several years that will help accommodate all of that additional development. When we think about what's happening with the overall housing, uh, picture, again, uh, I would point to that fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, when we look at the data, the data is very positive. When you look at what's happened within the D F W area, uh, the overall number of, uh, annual starts is at that forty-seven thousand four twenty-one number. Um, that is the highest in the country. Again, in overall, when you look at the overall state of Texas, uh, picture, you're looking at, uh, really four out of the, or three out of the top four, uh, and four out of the top six markets in the entire country. So again, continue to see, uh, significant housing activity. Not only looking at that thirteen percent increase when you look at year-over-year comparison, but also just even looking at that pre-pandemic level of that two thousand nineteen where we show that it's about a thirty-six percent increase from where it was, uh, basically about five years ago. Now, when we look at the enrollment picture for the state of Texas, uh, we are seeing, uh, we know we have population increases, um, but we're also kind of evaluating what that means for, uh, enrollment when we look at T E A and the overall state, uh, enrollment increases. And so you can see, much like what we reported with the twenty-three, twenty-four number, uh, somewhere in that thirteen thousand student increase range. So when you look at the overall population increases that we've seen the last several years, you would think that's a little bit larger. Um, we do think that again, similar to what we reported in the fall, that's partly tied to what we're seeing with homeschool numbers. Uh, so when you look at kind of that difference of where the numbers used to be, when you look at the seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, that forty thousand, thirty-two thousand number, um, that difference that we're seeing in twenty-three, twenty-four most likely should be in that general range when you look at the number of students. But we think that that, that, uh, difference in that twenty to potentially thirty thousand range is related to what we're seeing with, uh, with our homeschool numbers in the state of Texas.
Okay. Can I, can we go back to that for a second?
Certainly.
We now know, I guess this is next year. You don't, obviously, you know, I guess you don't think vouchers and school choice is going to have any impact, I guess, now that it's passed because that starts in twenty.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And are you now building that into your modeling in any ways? Is it statistically significant?
We're, we, we're starting to do that analysis. So right now it's, it will be, um, in the initial, in the initial stages of tracking for all intents and purposes because one of the things we, we really don't have any hard data yet. So what we will be referencing is kind of speculative related to where those trends are. What we're beginning to do is evaluate, uh, the, the, the numbers that we've seen in Florida, Ohio and Indiana and kind of track what those percentages are over the last several years. And with kind of the stages that they've gone through, um, what potential those percentages have been and what that could be in the next several years. So that, that hasn't been rolled into our models yet, uh, but we will be moving into that, uh, stage of modeling as we get into this next year.
As I understand, the, the first rollout of the school choice bill is, has a lot of caps in it in terms of, it's a hundred thousand students roughly.
Correct.
Probably not statistically significant when you average that out across the state.
It's, you, the, several things that we want to make sure we factor in when we analyze that information is, one, you're going to have existing families that have, um, students that are already in private schools that will be, proposing to stay and, and get some relief in that.
Florida and Ohio and, and where they seen these programs be rolled out, of the vast majority of the money that was allotted for school choice actually went to existing private school students. Because the reality of it is that that ten thousand dollar voucher is not going to help people go to Liberty because they still got to come up with another five, six, eight, ten thousand.
Correct.
And so what's going to happen, they're not going to apply and so the pot's going to be full for the existing students.
We, we anticipate that there will be some, some adjustments to some numbers, some of participations percentages that will change. But again, uh, we anticipate that a lot of existing families will get the initial benefit and relief. They're going to pursue those applications like even new, uh, new students potentially would. And so we know that's a factor. We also kind of know that some of those existing private schools have limited capacity. So it's not like, it's not like we would anticipate significant expansion, um, from, from many of those churches and institutions. So, um, at least currently right now, nothing's fast-tracked to expand in any significant numbers related to that. And then we also know that there'll be some challenges related to transportation when someone evaluates, uh, you know, where they're potentially going to go. So all those do factor in to keep the overall impact minimal. But we are anticipating somewhere in that range of anywhere from, um, one and a half to three percent that could potentially, you know, impact, um, many, many districts. That's going to, that, that will be different for each individual district. But we're, we're going through and starting to evaluate what that model potentially will look like, uh, as we go through the next year, year and a half. So, um, again, with anticipation of, of none of those numbers changing drastically until we get into that twenty-six, twenty-seven year and most likely it would be a few years out before we see significant number changes in, in relation to that.
So question. The I S D enrollment annual change, so this doesn't include homeschoolers or private schools or charter schools?
I, I would say right now with what we've got projected out and what we have anticipated, oh, as far as, as, as this existing numbers, these agnostic, existing numbers reference public ed as well as the charters. Those do, those numbers do not reflect anything related to specific homeschool, um, enrollment or, uh, private schools.
Okay, so what do you, if anything, attribute that significant drop between twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four? I mean, I would think that that would have come earlier, especially after COVID.
We, we do see that that, you know, that number that we saw in twenty-two, twenty-three did increase and we've referenced that in previous presentations where we talked about that COVID return. So there were family, a lot of, a number of families that didn't come back in twenty-one, twenty-two that did come, come, come back and return in twenty-two, twenty-three. So that did increase that, that, um, a little bit larger number than what we would have seen just as a, as a shift from the twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three year. But again, when you start to look at what would the, what the norm potentially was related to anywhere from probably forty to sixty thousand, what we can see is we see significant increases, um, when we look at virtual schools and even public schools that are virtual schools. We've seen a significant increase, almost thirty thousand students that have just increased their percentages over the last three years in going to that option.
Well, in those, in those virtual school, I mean, the T E A doesn't allow you to just get those approved every year. So that was a big year for the, I think it was the one in the basin down there that opened. It had all those students that enrolled, so that was just a big year for virtual and then they haven't approved anymore since then.
So, eh, yes, and so we just see, we do see some trends where some of it's been lifestyle, some of it's been tied to parents being able to do things remotely and, and be in different, different situations. So that's why we do believe that that differential really ties to what we're seeing with homeschooling, not anticipating a significant increase with private. So the only thing that's a number that we really truly don't know quite yet is, is related to, to that homeschool. So we, when we look at kind of what we see with the population increases and what we know those numbers have been, we, we, that's, that's the, that's the only piece of data that we haven't been able to truly analyze because that information isn't readily available.
Just seems like such a significant drop, I mean, those last two years. Okay, all right, thanks.
Just not as many entering in because that was a big virtual year, that one year.
Yeah.
When we look at just the overall five-year view of what we've seen, not only in the district, but also within the region, it's, it is a stark contrast, so you can see the significant increase of seventy-seven percent enrollment, uh, when you look at what's happened in Argyle I S D. When you look at the larger, uh, region, uh, related to region eleven, you'll see what's happened, uh, in, in those districts. Again, kind of in that, uh, Arlington region, Fort Worth, uh, some of those larger districts that have matured and, and been built out. You've seen the, the conversations that happened about, uh, enrollment loss and, uh, campus closures at those specific campuses. So again, just kind of showing kind of what, what patterns exist. Again, this is partly tied to seeing those areas that have been matured and, and, uh, are aging out and then those outer areas of the metroplex, that not, not only in region eleven on the forward side, but also on the, uh, region ten Dallas side, we see similar, uh, similar trends. When we look at the, the, the home starts, again, just referencing kind of that pattern that we see here, the, the one thing that I would point out is we're, we're looking at kind of what's happened over the last several years. Uh, you've, you've seen kind of a, a, a significant surge in starts, uh, early on in that twenty-twenty-one timeframe. It started to come back down when those interest rates increased. And so those, there, there's been a fairly significant separation and crossing a couple of times. But what we are seeing right now is that builders are really starting to analyze, um, how critical it is to evaluate where they're at with their inventory, where they're at with closings and then monitoring how many home starts they'll start back up, based off of the amount of activity that's taking place with those closings. Uh, when we look at the price point, so we look at home sales over the last several years, we have seen, uh, significant increases when you look at both new home starts as well as existing, again, referencing that forty-three percent increase over the last six years, that hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar amount, um, in existing house, uh, houses having a pretty significant, uh, increase above that at that two hundred and eighty thousand range. What we will see, uh, when you look at the overall, uh, information from the total home sales in twenty-four versus twenty-three is we are seeing some, some home price, uh, softening, uh, from, from what we saw in the, uh, twenty-three, uh, year.
What, what do you think that's due to? Was it interest rates originally?
I do think that ties to some interest rates and some softening in the market. Uh, again, even with a, a, a market that is as attractive as what we have, uh, in the district, you're seeing builders that are having to create incentives, uh, to help, um, families be able to potentially close the gap on some of those, uh, uh, home sales prices that they're dealing with and those interest rates that they're out there. So they're creating more and more incentives, um, to be able to help those families. A lot of families in the last several years were moving into the area from out of state, uh, and were selling homes at a higher price and being able to, uh, afford, uh, a price that was viewed as much more affordable in the area. But that was also driving those, those costs higher. So, uh, we're, we're seeing a little bit of a softening, not only specifically here, but in, uh, various different regions within the overall area.
And you're also seeing the fact that construction cost in the housing market is probably going down and they can sell them for less and so that seems to be in the anomaly out here seems to be schools.
Don't take the bait.
Yeah, it's, it's, so, it's, it's, it's really tied to, we do see.
Concrete's more expensive when you're building a school, but it's, you know.
We, we see.
Cheaper when you build a house.
What we do see is, uh, a compression of margins. Let me just reference that. I think that's really what we're, what we're seeing. Builders, uh, are, are having to, uh, to work through some challenging times with material costs and those kind of things, but also knowing, um, what, what they have to accomplish, um, with what they've got in front of them, so. When you look at the overall quarterly, uh, numbers, you'll ultimately see that we are really solid when you think about, uh, home starts, um, from that, uh, two thousand twenty-four total of eight eighty-five. Uh, again, when you look at the overall picture, the, the only time we were stronger related to overall numbers really was in twenty-one. So, uh, that continues to be very, very good. Again, what I would continue to monitor is to see where we're at with closings. That's extremely important, uh, and we're staying fairly consistent with where we were when, in two thousand twenty-three. So a little bit lower than where we were in two thousand twenty-two, looking at kind of what that, uh, those bigger numbers were in twenty-one tying into two thousand twenty-two. But again, I would still say these are extremely positive and consistent numbers, uh, related to starts and closings. Overall, looking at the amount of development that's, uh, within the overall district, you can see twenty-seven active building subdivisions with seventeen, uh, futures still out there, uh, eight hundred and twenty lots that are within about eight subdivisions out there. Again, highlighted in that, uh, outlined red subdivision, uh, graphic that we have currently right there. Again, I'll kind of go on the north side and, and, and go a little further south as we go through this. Glenwood Meadows, um, showing a hundred and forty-five total lots there, uh, six vacant developed lots, a few, about five homes currently under construction in that one right now. You can see they do have, uh, another phase that's out there, um, that's currently in, in the process of being developed. And again, this is Bloomfield Homes with a price point of about five hundred and seven thousand. Vintage Village, just to the south of that, is one that we've highlighted several times. They show about fourteen homes currently under construction. They've got thirty-nine of those that are occupied. There's still quite a few vacant developed lots left to be, uh, built with that. That's M I Homes that's building that development, uh, again, price points at that four hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Last time you gave us a report on Vintage Village, it had ten houses and yielded twelve kids at a one-point-two rate. Do you know what these forty hun, homes are now yielding?
I won't have that, that specific because I don't have the spring, I don't have that spring geocode here, but, uh, we will definitely keep track of that and identify that in the fall report so that you know kind of what the, that, that carryover is. I, again, I, I would expect that to come back a little closer to the norm, even, even though that, what I would call the Argyle norm is not necessarily what I would refer to as a norm. Um, that is still a much higher yield than what we see in a lot of places. But again, I would, being at that anywhere from point seven, point eight that we see in, in many of the developments, I would, I would anticipate we would be somewhere in that range. Uh, when we look at the overall, you know, the, the, the large one that's been out there that we continue to track is, is Harvest. We've got, uh, that, uh, divided up between Rusman, uh, Elementary and, uh, and really the Argyle West Campus. Again, you're going to see that we've got quite a few homes that are being finished up, that are identified, uh, is, is, um, finish out or homes under construction. Again, you're going to see that we've got quite a few homes that are being finished up, that are identified as, as finish out or homes under construction. So that's quite a few of those that were in this fourth quarter fall timeframe of, of many of those being developed. Again, at that, in those price points of anywhere from four-hundred thousand plus. So still quite a bit of activity, but getting, getting very, very close to being built out in that, in that area.
What, what's your ratio on those generally?
You know, when we looked at the, the, the yields that we, that we've referenced in this region, we were at that point eight-five to point nine range. So it was very, very high. Again, I would anticipate over the next year or two that, that coming down just a little bit. Again, a part of that would be a few students aging out and just about being built out. So not a lot of new, new families moving into the area. So, but again, that's still going to be a, a very high yield area, very attractive for families within that area. So.
Didn't we turn out to be higher than that for Rusman?
We did, we did. So we're, we're, we're closer to, at least in the fall, when we looked at the numbers, we were, we were, we were right, almost right at one. So it was a, a number that we seldom see. I'll just reference that. I don't want to say we never see, but we, we seldom see that, that high of a yield in those years.
Planning, are you coming off that one?
I would still, long-term, I would still ultimately still say, I think that the, we'll still, those numbers will still come down a little bit from where they would. I certainly wouldn't anticipate that, that one would be the norm. Again, I, I would still consistently say that we're going to be closer to long-term with full build-out. We're going to look at percentages that still, still should come down. Most districts were at somewhere between four, point four and point six. Right now with our numbers, we're higher than that. And so we, we have to look at somewhere in that point seven to point eight range when we're talking about the numbers that, that we, we, we see based off a trend. But I would still anticipate that those numbers should, should come down a little bit as we go through the next, next couple of years.
Have you studied Lantana Elementary Schools?
Uh, I, I, I couldn't tell you that I've, I've specifically studied that.
One of the things I'd be curious about is because I, I see Lantana, it's, it's a, it's a different master planned community with golf courses and country clubs, but I think they have maybe three elementary schools that serve. Do you, do you do Denton I S D?
We do have Denton, yes.
And I'm just kind of curious because this, this, this typical ten, trend that you see in other communities where they have declining, or they peak and they decline. Most of those communities like Richardson and Plano, they didn't have master planned, front yard, high H O A fees, design for children, you know, type community. So those, those homeowners stayed in Richardson.
Yes.
Here I see the, the whole financing structure incentivizing empty nesters to leave and get out of this high H O A, high tax area. And I'm wondering, Lantana started in the nineties and it's a good fifteen, twenty years ahead. Is, are their elementary schools declining or are they staying about the same because it's regentifying?
So what, what I would want to do is, is, is let me, let me go back and do, I, I can, we can, we can evaluate that information in that specific area. Uh, very well could be.
Okay.
Because again, when you evaluate kind of where things were related to that master plan, price points being what they are, there, there, there could be something that could, could tie over to what we're dealing with currently right now. So that could help us being able to kind of identify that and then see how that may relate with what we're dealing with currently right now.
And quick question one more time, just on Rusman again. You had, what did we staff on this last year? What was, what was the yield that you?
Point eight, he used the harvest yield.
We, we used, we used closer to, to around a little over point eight, I believe, is what we, we had identified previously.
And, and you think right now that we wound up running at one roughly?
Yes.
So I know you're talking about the point eight-five, point nine or point seven eventually, but I'm just thinking near-term, you know, until we get another elementary on the ground. Are we still reasonable at looking at a one?
Yeah, I think that's-
Well, I think in those areas, we're not changing those areas right now.
We've, we've referenced in our projections, we did have to go with higher yields based off of the numbers that we got this year. So that did shift and change those. We, and you, and you'll see in, in the, in our projections that we've got for our ten-year, that incorporated the boundary adjustments that we made.
And we're still going to have every classroom full for the next two years.
So using a one is realistic at this point still?
That's what we're using.
Okay.
Out there anyway.
So your, your numbers that we're going to see on the chart reflect that, that a one?
They're going to, they, they reflect that higher number, yes. Yes. Again, when you kind of look up in that Rusman area, again, Ridge at Northlake, what I would share is we, we show about three-hundred-and-seventy-four futures that are there, a few vacant developed lots. We do show again, as you look at, not necessarily what we see in the spring, which is just a lot of finish out, but we had a lot of homes being finished out as we were, were early in that fall into that, into what we refer to as that fourth quarter data that we're analyzing currently right now. Now, one, one of the things that we do see right now is you have a few phases that are in this Ridge at Northlake Development that where they've been putting in utilities and roads, preparing for that next phase of things. So we, we, we don't see a lot of foundations being poured quite yet. So there, there could be a little bit of a pause that we may be seeing in the fall, which wouldn't, may not be necessarily bad when you're talking about some of the high numbers we've been dealing with the last several years. So, so again, I would still expect a significant amount of, of activity taking place in those next couple of phases. But again, part of that is tied to preparing those, those phases with those utilities and road, roads that are going in. Because when you look at this in comparison to what we were looking at in the fall, there were no roads in, they were just cutting those roads in at the time. So you can see there is significant progress being taken place, just not a lot of foundations or, or housing activity currently taking place. Uh, again, kind of identified this is that Village Town Homes, a little bit further south off of Bonnie Bray Street. This is going to be twenty-seven futures. They do have a little bit of groundwork that's, that's underway in that area currently right now. Again, in the Hilltop Zone is, is the Knights Landing, twenty-seven futures, large lots, one, one-plus acre lots that are on that. Again, extremely high price points related to these large custom homes in that area. High Plains at First Ranch. This has been a development that has had a little bit of activity in the last, in the last several months, being changed out from what has been a Heinz development to what is being now developed, purchased and now being developed by Starwood Capital Land Management. So they're, they're taking that over. They're, they've been able to, they've, they've already put plans in place that mirror what, what we've seen previously. There could be some, some minor adjustments to it, some numbers that we see. But ultimately, it's going to be much in line with what we've seen the last, in the planning stages that Heinz brought, brought forth. Uh, again, kind of Argyle South area, Argyle Landing has forty-three futures that are there, one acre lots. But you can also see there's groundwork that's, that's currently taking place, getting those lots ready to go for, for that development. And then Enclave at, at Hickory Hill, again, looking at kind of where we've got quite a few developments in that stage of roads and infrastructure. Again, this is a Toll Brothers development, fairly high price points for, for this development as well. Again, quite a bit of activity taking place. And then La Stancia, developed, previous development that we had is, is now being amended to be a development called Brookview. Much of the numbers related to the single family are, are similar to what we've reported previously. What I will say is the number of multifamily units is a little lower than what we initially saw in some of the previous information that we had. So again, ultimately, two-hundred-and-fifty townhomes with three-hundred multifamily units in the overall master plan development for that, for that area. When we, we look at kind of the multifamily picture, again, anticipating quite a few units that have been brought on. When you look at the larger D F W area of about thirty-six thousand two-hundred-and-eleven units and absorption rate related to those moving in is significantly lower than that. Again, significant amount of supply. So we've seen that occupancy rate drop in those units. We're seeing a number of, of incentives and some of those rent rates come down a little bit from, from where they've been. But again, if you looked at some of those, it's drastically different than what some of us used to, used to pay back in the day. But anyway, I'll leave it at that. We, we do have, again, referencing a little bit of multifamily that is currently under construction, I'll, I'll reference that. And then some, some multifamily units that are in some planning stages there. And then again, highlighting kind of where we're at with that Harris Development or with, with, with Harvest House, that three-hundred-and-forty-nine total units, and they do have some groundwork underway on that one, anticipating that first units potentially could be about a year, year and a half out from, from leasing those units. So big picture, when we kind of look at where we're at, again, we're referencing numbers that should be in that approximately about eight percent as we go into next year, referencing a, a projection enrollment increase of about four-hundred-and-eighty-three students. With that, that potentially is, is again, we're, we're still being fairly consistent with what we've got for our overall numbers. We, those, minor adjustments to, to where we're at from the fall. But again, fairly consistent, looking at a number that when we think about ten years out, potentially is going to be at that eleven-thousand-three-hundred total. And again, when you look at this chart related to the elementary campuses, what I would say is this is a reflection of what we've referenced with the updated elementary boundaries that were approved just several months ago. So the, the amended adjustments that we made to the elementary. So referencing what that potentially would look like down the road.
Can you go back one slide?
Mm-hmm.
Over on the far right column, you're, you're saying next year we, you're projecting eight percent growth, total growth?
Yes.
Which is, which would be the lowest percentage that we would have experienced in the previous five, I think? You, I mean, is there a reason or are you just saying?
I mean, we, we do see that, that we, we are anticipating, one, that, that part of that number that we had that jumped up from, from that twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five really tied to expansion of pre-K numbers. So that, we don't anticipate another significant increase related to the, those pre-K numbers. And then we also anticipate that, that the district will be a little bit more conservative with, with evaluating some of those transfers that we've, that were, that, that have been approved this, you know, this past year. So those are, are a few of the conditions that we've, we've taken into consideration when we're talking about what we think these projections potentially would be.
We're at sixty-two ninety-five today, so that's what we're going to end the year.
Which is higher than the twelve-point-seven that's on here, sixty-two ninety-five?
Correct. And we, we would, I mean, as, as we anticipate, we're expecting that as we have, we'll continue to grow, grow through the year. But what we're, what we're trying to hit related to that six-thousand-five-eighty-four number is really that, that October snapshot, that fall number that, that we'll, we'll be looking at. Because that's, that's the true number that we're looking at over the last several years related to what those numbers look like. So again, in summary, when we think about big picture, again, significant activity continues in the D F W area. We did show an extremely strong year at twenty-four with that eight-hundred-and-fifty starts, seven-hundred-and-forty-six closes. And what that looked like in comparison to the previous year. Five-hundred homes are currently in inventory right now and we do see some of what's happening in the existing home market. We do have more, more inventory for sale than what we've seen the last few years, not necessarily specific to the district, but we do see that, that happening in the overall marketplace. We do see some of that in the district, but, but, but that's more of a, a reference to the overall numbers that we see within the overall area. And again, groundwork is underway on, on about eight-hundred-and-twenty of those lots within several of the subdivisions. And again, we've, we've talked about where we think the numbers are going to be over the next five and ten years. So happy to answer any additional questions that you may have. Thank you. All right, thank you all very much.
All right, Dr. Carpenter?
Yeah, just got a few things this evening. As everyone is aware, we did celebrate our class of twenty-twenty-five last night at U N T. It was a great evening. I think we got it all done in between the storms as they came through. But just congratulations to the class. They just, they, they were amazing. I'm so excited to celebrate them. Thank you to all the families that came out. We had just over three-hundred-and-sixty graduates. This will be our last class under four-hundred, if things stay on track. So U L Academics, they are actually in Austin as we speak, competing at state. So we are anxiously awaiting to hear their results over the next couple of days and looking to, for them to bring home another state championship. Last week, Friday, we had mixed doubles tennis team of Julia Lightner and Kayden Everett. They won regionals, but they competed at state last week and ended up finishing third. So very proud of our mixed doubles team. And then recently, we had five-A state champion pole vaulters Gator Young and Peyton Berry. So we won the girls and boys five-A state champion in pole vault. So congratulations to those students. District news, staff that will be returning next year, signed contracts and letters of assurances will be receiving their retention one-time payment this week on the twenty-third. So that'll be nice for them. They'll be either getting their thousand dollars or five-hundred. And we will have our next budget workshop on June fifth and that's where we'll have discussing compensation packages for next year for a potential approval at the end of June, depending on legislative action. Obviously, we're aware, everyone's aware, the House, Senate currently has the House's version. What the Senate has put out is quite significantly different and so they're still working through that. On that note, I know we have put out a few things last week to our community for a call to action. And with that, Senator Parker's inbox received nearly nine-hundred emails from this community. So that was a very strong, in fact, I've had a follow-up asking for, asking for us to follow up with how much difference the Senate and the House side and the impact on that. And Ms. Stewart's going to get that for me to send off. So they are still working on that and they have a very short window before this session closes. So we are pushing hard with the end of school to get something done down there so that we can bring you some good news in June in terms of legislative action. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Dr. Jordan?
Bringing this back for the second month, our new curriculum for math, just going through the process. STEM scopes was the overall choice for K through five math, sixty-seven-point-three percent of teachers chose it as their first choice. In middle school through Algebra II, overwhelmingly, one-hundred percent chose Agile Mind as their choice for the math curriculum. Just a little bit from the review process, both of these received twenty-five out of twenty-five points during the rating process. What's included is, here's a list. The thing that is a little bit different than last time is the fluency kits and the foundation kits. We decided to do a digital access because that's not something that they're, they're, have available for the whole class at once. It's small groups. So teachers will have the digital version where they can just print what they need because they were going to have to print it from a hard copy anyway. So that's one small change. It saved us a little bit of money. And then the number of professional development hours, we decided to do more of a train the trainer model. Gives us more flexibility of when we provide professional development to our teachers. Agile Mind, no change from what was reported to you last month. So as a reminder, we do have forty dollars stored from last school year, a total of eighty dollars per student now that we have put in our savings account that we can use towards these purchases of approved materials. So our current balance right now is over four-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. This is a separate account, different from our I N S and M and O. So what's the bottom line is those are our costs not to exceed. You'll see at the very bottom, the two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-six will come out of one account and then that's the forty dollars per student that we get. And then the twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred comes out of E map, which is a separate account because that is, that part of the materials is not approved by S B O E because it's our advanced math, which is a combination of six and seven- because it's our advanced math, which is a combination of sixth and seventh grade or seventh and eighth grade. And they don't make such a thing for these curriculums, so it doesn't qualify for the forty dollars. We expect to get a get about one-point-six million in our EMAT account when this legislative session is over. So in July or so, they usually put that into our account. So of that, twenty-nine thousand will go towards these purchases. And then the other part of it, we already have sitting in our account. And we get forty dollars per student every single year, as long as we we can use it, as long as we are using it towards SBOE-approved materials. Do you have any questions for me on the math adoption?
The nine-eighty-six is paid out annually. Not not, it's in four payments, or is it all at one time?
No, it's not all at one time. Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Workman.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve Action Number eleven A as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. McDade with second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Hi, Liz.
Hello. All right. Last last item, I believe. This is our transportation software that we talked about last month. Still bringing it back with a cost of one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars for the implementation. Do you have any questions that we could go over or anything since last meeting?
No, I just appreciate the comprehensive review from several vantage points. Because definitely, you know, set adjust transportation.
Yes, there were quite a few that helped review this.
Yeah.
And we do have, Freddie Bell and Tommy Ledford are here to not to answer any questions. And then Gregori are also for anything from technology.
Yeah, I'm good. I think y'all did a good job.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Action Number eleven B as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Hossworth motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Arthur with second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time is seven-thirty-nine P.M. We are going to adjourn to executive session. When we come back, there will be no action taken. Thank you.